Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. I am Council President Malley Rosado. Thank you for your patience. I would like to call to order the public comment for tonight, February 10th, 2010, to hear any feedbacks and concerns. First on the list is Kyle Anderson.
Good evening, Madam President, Council members, public. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I stand in front of you to endorse the confirmation of Jason Thody as our next Chief of Police for the City of Hartford. When I was the Chairman of Public Safety, I had a chance to interact with Mr. Thody. For four years, he served on the Chief of Vella. His professionalism, his knowledge of the City of Hartford, his perspective on community policing, his camaraderie with his, at that time, his fellow employees, I think went a long way. I was impressed. And one thing was very impressive to me about Mr. Thody was that anytime I would come to the office, he would listen first, and then he would ask what the concerns were. He would listen to anyone who had any problem, and I watched him on several occasions address our community. And one of the things that he did do was his listening skills and his problem-solving skills, which I think were something that we need for this city. He understands the inner workings of the Hartford Police Department. He has been there. He's come up through the ranks. It's my understanding that he was an explorer, so he's a homegrown Hartford Police Officer. So I stand before you to say, I think we save some money by not doing a national search and that we have a golden star within our coffers right now, and let's keep him here. And over the years, we have lost a lot of qualified men and women who served our Public Safety Department. They've gone on to bigger and better places. I can just name off names. Look at Chief Vella now where he is. We don't realize our gems when we have them. We just have to make sure that when we have them, we respect them as our gems and let them do and be supportive of their jobs. One of the things, my time is running out, but very quickly, one of the things that we spoke about was community policing, the non-setting of Citron versus, Citron and community policing. I know that's going to be something that's going to be high on his priority. Also, too, when he has his ComStat meetings, he's going to make sure people from the community still come back to that. That was something that I thought was very impressive with Chief Vella. So he sees the ups and downs over his tenure and working under so many police trips. So, thank you for your time, and I endorse the confirmation of Jason Thody as our next Police Chief. Thank you.
Next on the list is State Representative Minnie Gonzalez.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words tonight. Here about the Harm Reduction Center, they're planning for Frog Hollow. And I want to be very clear, I'm against that. I'm not against the program, I'm not against the treatment, but I'm against the area where they want to put the Harm Reduction Center. We all know Frog Hollow. Frog Hollow is a very poor community. Frog Hollow, we have a lot of poor people, people that don't have a job, also people that have problems, you know, drug problems. So we all know that when we put a lot of people together, we always going to find some of those problems. So we are trying to see, one way or the other, how we can resolve the problem in Frog Hollow. Now, around that 28 Grand Street, we have the clinic. We have Chartered Old Clinic. People from Chartered Old Clinic, they are complaining. Also, they don't want that because they know there is going to be a problem around the clinic. We have two schools. We have Maria Sanchez and we have Burn School. We also have two senior buildings around the area, and it's a lot of problems, people complaining, the seniors complaining about the drug addict around the area. Now, we know right now that there are two centers down Albany Avenue. One, they're going to keep one open, as far as I know, I heard today, and the other one, they want to move to 28 Grand Street. And my question is, why they want to move this to Grand Street? Well, some of those answers is, well, we want to help the people in Frog Hollow because that's the biggest problem that we have in Hartford opioid, is number one in Frog Hollow. But no, that's not the reason. Because before, there were two down Albany Avenue, not Frog Hollow. Now, because now, the people down Albany Avenue, they've been complaining about lottery and about fights, they've been complaining about everything down there. Now they were looking for a place where we can put this center. West end, they don't want it. The south end, they don't want that. The suburb, they don't want this. So, okay, it's fine, let's put this, let's dump this in Frog Hollow area. Now, it's not going to happen because we have to understand that right now, we got a huge problem in Frog Hollow. So now, bringing that center, instead of helping, we're going to create another problem on top of a problem. Right now, the merchants are complaining, business people are complaining, right now, the people around Grand Street, the business people are trained to leave the City of Hartford because we have to find out where the problem is and what is the solution. It's not creating more problems. There's a lot of stories around this harm center. Well, they are saying this is for administrative services, or this is for whatever reason, but they are saying we're not going to provide no kind of treatment. Now, I met with Mark Jenkins, and he was very clear. Yes, this is for administrative service, but if we receive client, we're going to provide them the services that they need. So, it is a lot of stories around the city, but in reality, the truth, they're not telling them, anybody, the truth. And I think that it's time for the council to start listening to the Latino and Puerto Rican community. It's time. We deserve the same right, the same services. We deserve the best. Right now, I don't think that because we Latinos and Puerto Ricans, we're going to close our arms and we're going to let people to walk all over us. That's not what we're planning to do. We're planning to see how we can work. If people want really to serve that area, why now, after Albany Avenue, they don't want the center down there? Let's sit down. This is what I propose. Let's sit down. Let's talk about the problem. Let's find a solution. Let's find a place where it's more and it's better to provide this kind of services. The people that have that disease, if they know that their services in Hartford Hospital or somewhere else, if they really want to get treatment, they will go to those places. So, this is not the solution. Frog Hollow is not the solution. And again, the people that are here and the people that have been complaining about this, it's not that we against the treatment. Because the people that are pushing for this, what they are saying, oh, wait a minute, as a state rep, you don't care about the community? That's a guilty trick, they're not going to put it on me. You know, you talking to a person that's been involved in the community for so many years, so that's not going to work. The guilty trick is not going to work. What is going to work is let's sit down together. You want to help my community? Let's sit down and let's decide what is the best for our community, not what people decide because the suburb, the west end, or the north side, or the south end, they don't want this. So I hope that you guys take this very seriously because we're the community, we are very serious in against this. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Your son deals drugs on my street. You had a family member who was over there that died in a car accident. You're out of order.
Thank you.
Mr. Sias?
Am I in the list or something? Yes.
Yes, you have two minutes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I have my business there. I bought a building that had been vacant for more than two years. I invested a lot of money there and I'm creating jobs, just saying that a lot of people here are investing money in the City of Hartford, creating jobs. And we want to know whether Hartford is going to be a city that is going to be opening, you know, its arm to the people that are investing in the city, creating jobs, and trying to make this a better city, or it's going to be a city that is going to be doing things like that, like after we invest our money, we create our businesses, we're going to have a program that is going to be so disrupting there. I mean, there are families in Hungerford Street and in Grand Street that are going to be sacrificed to this. There are businesses, there are people that go around there. And again, the decision, I think you could help. You are not powerless. You should be able to help. And again, the City of Hartford should be a city that should be a place to attract, invest people that come here to invest money. We're putting our money in the neighborhoods. We are, you know, we, Victor Flores in Mercado, and all of this, he has his business there. And we are not against, I echo the words of Representative Gonzalez, that we are not here, we have sympathy, and we know, we understand that there are problems there in Frog Hollow and Park Street, but I don't think that the remedy is sacrificing a neighborhood that is stable, that neighborhood of Oak Street, Hungerford Street. It's a stable neighborhood. People investing money, people creating jobs, people working there, sacrificing to have a very nice, stable neighborhood, and we don't want to be, we don't want to be the victims to this. And again, and I want to emphasize that now, my understanding is, the claim is that the space is going to be used for administrative offices only, but again, we have the statement from Mr. Jenkins saying, well, if people come here looking for services, we're going to be providing the services. And that would be a violation of the zoning regulations, or zoning ordinance, but again, we are not going to be able to monitor that. I think the best way is to make sure that that program is placed in another neighborhood. Please do not destroy a neighborhood that is stable, where people are investing money, where people are working hard to try to create jobs and investing money in property, and I think you could do something. And I hope that you do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sias. Ramona Royo? Ramona Royo?
She already said it.
Okay. Ramon Flores?
Good evening, and thank you for your opportunity, same as the other ones. I own over the Mercado, I owned the supermarket inside the Mercado for 25 years, I own El Mercado for four years, three and a half years. And those three and a half years, I spent in El Mercado to bet at the Mercado $400,000 and a little bit over. And then what I go through every single day in the Mercado, you won't believe it, I've been threatened, I'm coming back to kill you, I'm going to this, I'm going to do that. And I go through hell in the Mercado, and I saved a lot of people by calling 9/11. People are dying in the bathroom, they already blew, using drugs. And I tell you the truth, if that goes on in Grand Street, I will sell the business. And I got almost 60 people working in the Mercado for me because I cannot tolerate no more. When I started, I was 50 years old, I'm 75, and I cannot cope with it anymore. It's very dreadful, and it's very, my life is dreadful many times. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Maria Lozada?
I am participating because we own a property business, business and the property building on Park Street, and we know how this affects our community. We have tenants living there, youth people with kids that are 40 years old, and we want to protect them, the safe of the community, and I think the service can be good for the people that you are serving. But I think it's better to relocate in another place because we need to maintain safe the community, and that's all.
If you can come, Maria Sanchez? Let's see if I can pronounce this. Is it Nija Soden? Nija? Please state your address for the record.
It's 41 Grand Street. Okay, so I'm just disgusted by the whole situation about, you know, bringing that kind of facility to my neighborhood. I live at 41 Grand Street. It's literally right across the street from this facility. Now, there's going to be places like for prostitutes, for opioid addicts to come to my neighborhood. There's already a flooded place where I find people all over my property. I have to kick them off my property in the middle of the night. There's car accidents because, like, these drug addicts are in the middle of the street just getting high, and, you know, it's just, I bought this house because I thought, like, you know, maybe the neighborhood would progress, maybe it'll, you know, get better. And it's just getting worse and worse. And be living in that area is, you know, I have five boys, where I don't even like them to go outside in my backyard because I'm scared they're going to get shot because the drug dealers are all over the place, and the drug addicts are even worse. I'm scared for my husband because I have to constantly tell him to go fight these drug addicts off of my property. So now that this has become an issue, now it's literally in my front lawn. I have it already in my neighborhood, now it's going to be even worse. And I just hope that you guys could do something about it. That's it.
Thank you. Ron? Is it Ron Peasley?
Yes.
Please state your address for the record, sir.
Yes, I own the 844-850 Park Street. I've been there for 25 years. I see this thing here coming down as something that's going to be adding to more problems on Park Street. I already have drug addicts, drug dealers on my property. I can't do anything about it. This is just going to make it worse. Why can't they put this in Hartford Hospital, or down on Murphy Road or someplace where it's not in the community where people live and kids are? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Juan Pereira?
We have been the business on Park Street for over 25 years. We have seen this problem for that many years, and it's not getting better. It's actually getting worse. We, as a family business, we have shared difficult times, robberies including. So, to think that you guys are trying to do something like this, I believe is something good, but if it's going to be bad for our neighborhood, I would prefer if you guys would decide to maybe locate it, relocate it. But I mean, for over what I'm hearing right now, I see that it's even getting worse for other kinds of persons. So I would prefer if you guys think better about it. Our address is 523 Park Street. We are across from the shelter. So we see this every single day. We see drug addicts, we see alcoholics, I'm sorry, we see dealers. It is pretty complicated. And even I have clients from outside Connecticut that doesn't want to come to my store because they are afraid of the neighborhood. They don't want to share any kind of action with the people around there. So I'll say with all my attention that please, guys, think better about it and hear what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabol Peruano Almando?
Yes, we just see a lot of things moving to Hartford, but the thing is, like, we're thinking like we invested a lot of money in those places right there, so we don't see that, the people coming because we see a lot of people messing around. And so, for me, we're thinking like, why they don't do it in other places, it's many places around Hartford instead of Park Street. And we created new jobs, and we created a lot of things new, so might be thinking, moving in another place. We must understand that part, everyone needed something to do for those people, but the thing is, in the Park Street, it's always the problem. It's been forever. So you see the other people have a business right there and haven't been, get, created more because it's a lot of messing around, so just thinking about that.
Thank you. If, when coming to the podium, if you could please state your name and address for the record? Thank you. Sonia Ayala?
Good evening. I'm a business owner. My name is Sonia Ayala. I own 57 Park Street. I've been in the Park Street area for many, many years. And while I commend the effort on looking for programs that are going to benefit everyone, I don't think that this program is going to benefit the people here in the Frog Hollow area there. I work with the police, you know, on a day-to-day basis there, and I see the hard work that the Police Department does. I believe, you know, there's several hotspots area there in front of, you know, my business there. And there's a lot of good things that are coming along in the area there, but I do not believe that this would benefit, okay, our, you know, the Frog Hollow area there. You know, the Police Department has enough work already, okay? And I see time after time there with the drug dealing and the way that the police puts their effort there. People there put their efforts there to take and make the neighborhood a better neighborhood there, and the problem, you know, keeps coming back. You know, it comes back from the court system, and now, you know, you have it in your hands there. You have the way to take and bring this program someplace else, okay? I'm not, again, against the program in itself, I'm just against in the area there. We have a lot of family businesses there. You know, there's kids that walk to school, there's schools, libraries. Now we have, you know, the library that's closed there. You know, what are we going to do? You know, the city's going to take, you know, one step forward, okay, and then take five steps backwards. Let's work in a positive way that is going to benefit everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Amariles Vicente? No? Okay. Is it Andrea Arce?
This is Amariles. She doesn't speak English, so I'm going to be translating. Okay.
Okay. Buenas noches. Mi motivo es de estar aquí.
Dile la dirección y tu nombre.
Vivo en la Broad Street.
I live on Broad Street.
660. Mi miedo es, tengo hijos, tengo tres niños.
I'm really afraid, I have three kids.
Mis niños no pueden andar solos en la calle. Tengo que ir por ellos, a dejarlos a la escuela, y ir a traerlos. ¿Por qué? Porque no se puede andar bien en esas calles.
I have kids, and I have to continually bring them to school, back from school, and, you know, they cannot walk in that area.
Hay mucho peligro en las calles por todo lo que se escucha y más por lo que quieren poner ahí en esas calles. Entonces, este, no podemos dejar solo a los niños y es...
It's really difficult right now, but with this program that they're trying to open, things are going to get worse. We cannot leave our kids alone.
Por eso mi motivo es estar en contra de eso.
And the reason why I'm here is because I'm against this program.
Thank you. Is it Andrea Arce or Arce?
Good evening. My name is Andrea Flores, no Arce. Flores.
My name is Andrea Flores, not Arce.
I'm Ramon Flores White. We have another business in the Park Street, in Lawrence Street, 32 Lawrence Street. Voy a cambiar a español. Tenemos ahora mismo un poco mejorada las calles de Hartford, sobre todo la Park Street.
We have seen development on Park Street, and it has gotten better.
Se ha hecho un muy buen trabajo de la comunidad con la policía.
There's a lot of work being done with the Hartford Police Department.
Y han mejorado mucho las calles, se puede caminar más tranquilamente.
They have developed the streets, and we can walk more peacefully around the area.
Nosotros tenemos un parqueadero en la Lawrence Street.
We have a parking lot on Lawrence Street.
Y todos los días teníamos problemas con las personas que están en la calle, que están consumiendo drogas.
We have problems. We used to have a lot of problems in that parking lot with people that are drug users.
El apoyo de la policía nos ha servido mucho porque esto ha cambiado un 30%.
The support from the police has helped a lot. You know, it has gotten better, maybe like a 30%.
Y sería muy triste para nosotros como negocio y para la gente que vive en esta parte, que volviera otra vez a verse afectada como estaban meses anteriores.
And it will be very sad for us to see, you know, if it has to go back to what it used to be a couple of months ago.
Estamos a escasas dos cuadras de la escuela.
We are almost two blocks away from school.
Hay niños todo el tiempo alrededor.
There's kids around all the time.
Y no creo que sea buen ejemplo para los niños. Es un camino que ellos ven todos los días, un camino a seguir.
I don't think that that's a good example for them to see every day.
Y como decimos, los negocios, yo por lo menos quiero salir del parqueadero. Porque si esto sigue así, está mejorando, y si vuelve a caer, la verdad, no vale la pena invertir en Hartford.
So, as a business owner, it has gotten better, but if things go back to what they were, it makes no sense for us to keep doing business in Hartford.
Sería bueno que reconsideren o piensen muy bien lo que van a hacer porque muchas, muchas personas con negocio allí pueden retirarse, y sería un daño grande para la ciudad.
So we urge you to please reconsider and not allow this to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Barolas? Deb?
Deborah Barolas?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Excuse me. My handwriting was that bad, I apologize.
It's okay.
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, Councilmembers. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am here to speak in favor of the appointment of Jason Thody as Police Chief. As a former law enforcement officer for 28 years with Hartford Police Department and continuing to raise my family in the City of Hartford, I can speak to the ideal qualities and skills a Police Chief needs to have. I have known Jason Thody for many years. He has both vision and purpose. He is passionate and enthusiastic. Jason is open-minded and accessible. He has the capacity to actively listen and make the necessary choices to enhance the growth of our city. I am confident he will lead by example and hold people accountable. Chief Thody knows the importance of social justice, and he is committed to diversity. True leadership is not a position, it's not a title, it's a lifestyle of commitment toward a common goal. Chief Thody is a leader and deserving of the opportunity to be the Police Chief in our wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator John Fonfara? Senator John Fonfera?
Thank you, Madam President. I had not signed up, but I'll do that when I'm done here. Thank you. I'm going to take just a couple of minutes to speak on behalf of Chief Thody. It's not often that I come before the council, but on occasions where I think that what I might be able to contribute will be helpful, I, I try to make it. Council members, I'm here to speak on behalf of Chief Thody. I've had only a handful of experiences with him, but I thought they were, they would provide a perspective to the council that, in terms of my interactions. You all recall last April, the shooting death of Anthony Chulo Vega Cruz in Weathersfield. A traffic stop that ten minutes afterwards found him fatally injured by a Weathersfield police officer in a shooting. I felt at that time that that could have been anyone's child, anyone's teenager or grandkid who might have panicked and fled and ten minutes later effectively dead. I was then and remain profoundly disturbed by what happened.
Yeah, before she leaves.
A few days later, I called Chief Thody to get his perspective on what happened. Here's what he told me. He said, in the same week, that that unfortunate situation took place, as I said, ten minutes after a traffic stop, this young man lay in a hospital bed eventually and dying. That there was a shooting of a woman in Waterbury. A fatal situation. And it was a suspect was, they were pursuing him, trying to find him, the person that they believed was involved with the shooting. And the word came to the Hartford Police Department that this fellow was on his way to Hartford with a weapon in the car and had indicated that he either wanted to die by cop or would encourage that. Hartford Police located this gentleman, followed him for, through Hartford, through Bloomfield, West Hartford, where they eventually came to a stop and cornered him and they stayed in the vehicles for some amount of time until he exited and they arrested him and took it away. Took him away. Not a shot fired, no violence whatsoever. If one were to say, where would you expect if there were some physical altercation or weapon used in, in apprehending this person, you'd think that would be in Hartford, not in Weathersfield, but the opposite happened. That's the kind of leadership that Chief Thody brings to the Hartford Police Department, the training that is involved in addressing issues of this nature. Secondly, I know my time is up, but I'll be brief if I could, Madam President, in saying that recently, this past weekend, there was shots fired on my street in the south end of Hartford. I learned that there were two cars chasing each other and firing shots at each other. Fortunately, to my knowledge, no one was hurt, but I called Chief Thody about it. He kept me on the phone for forty-five minutes on his day off, talking about the efforts of the Hartford Police Department. He talked about the efforts of following the, the guidelines of a fellow by the name of David Kennedy. Some of you may have heard about him, who's written about reducing violence and using strategies and tactics to reduce violence among those that are caught in that world of drugs and violence. I've listened about, I've, I haven't read, but I've listened to some of the book that he's written, this fellow David Kennedy, and the strategies that Hartford is employing and the difference it is making in Boston and other places. I'll close by saying, you have a thoughtful individual in Chief Thody, who's put years of his life to work in Hartford and building a police department that we can be proud of. Is it perfect? I don't think anybody is, nor is the Hartford Police Department, but you have a leader that we can, we can all support. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Senator. Tom O'Brien?
Good evening, council. My name is Tom O'Brien. I'm your prosecutor from Hartford Community Corps. I know many of you. I can't endorse a candidate to be the police chief, but I can speak Jason Thody and some of the things that I see on a day-to-day basis of how the department's been improving and being responsive to the community. I think this meeting tonight is amazing. Just, this is democracy firsthand. You should be so proud of this. I work daily with the police department. I know many of the officers. I know Chief Thody. I've had many conversations about him. And it's a day and age when there's a mistrust of law enforcement, both police and prosecutors. And that mistrust is based on not knowing one another. Chief Thody understands that. And one of the ways to address that problem, we trust people that we know. Chief Thody is active in the community, always accessible. He demands that out of his officers that work for him. And he's willing to continue that and give the community an opportunity to get to know the police department, know the individuals, and build that trust that's so, so necessary to doing these jobs. Small things are happening in the department to show responsiveness to complaints that the community may have. Sexual assault and domestic violence is some of the most difficult cases we handle, embedded now within the police department because of interim police chief Thody. We have interval house and victims advocates within the department, working with the officers to provide better services. Sexual assault cases, there were complaints that maybe our officers weren't being so responsive to the needs of victims. There's been training in regards to that to try to address that problem. He's a man who can listen to complaints and act upon them. Change occurs through actions, not the words. Interim Police Chief Thody is a man of action. He takes what he hears from the community and tries to put it into action to change the department for better. I've seen an improvement there. Small things, but on the national level, what happened on Main Street right here with the homeless community. We had an encampment in front of the church there. We have in Hartford, an officer, Officer James Barrett, designated for homeless outreach. This is unheard of in most, in most cities. Hartford has that. Instead of moving and having a problem like so many other cities in the country, we had a peaceful relocation of people provided with services, led by the police department. Unheard of. And that's an example other cities are going to take. I know this man. I work with him. I've seen the improvement in the, in the police department. We have a ways to go. I think Chief Thody can take us there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say a couple of words about the chief. I didn't know he was the chief, but about three weeks ago, I was at the Martin Luther King event and a lot of people were sitting there. So I looked over and after the event, this, we all mingling and this gentleman came up and started talking to us. And he sat there, he never gave us his name. I thought he was part of the funeral director, Carmen Funeral Home, because they're all tall and look alike. So I took that for granted. So we all had a good time and he still didn't give me his name. And he was just so cool and dapper. And I said, gee, who is this man? He didn't say anything at all. He just sat there with his hand folded. So, and I, at the end, we were all sitting around, talking, and I said, sir, what's your name? He said, I'm acting chief of the police department. I said, and everybody says, so quiet. And he looked and he still didn't say anything. But I want to say this about the chief. I haven't met him before, but he listens very well. He has character. He is cool. And I like him wherever he is. Where is he? Oh, there he is. And I want to leave you with this little thought. Chief, be slow to speak. And please, it's great to listen. Please be slow to speak, because that's what you do. You're a listener. And that's what we need in the city of Hartford. And I live on Evergreen Avenue and I need you to do a drive-by.
I'm Officer Anthony Rinaldi. I've been a police officer in the city of Hartford for sixteen years. I'm the union president-elect. I just wanted to say a couple of words on behalf of our membership, the police department. I do see a significant improvement in morale within the rank and file. And I think that's very important for everybody to understand that when a police officer comes to work, if we could come to work and be happy, I think the residents and the businesses of the city of Hartford will, will see a difference in that. And I've seen that under Chief Thody. In my sixteen years, I believe I've been through eleven different police chiefs. A change in police chief is not what this police department needs at this time. That could actually damage morale. And morale is in a delicate place. It is improving, but it's still in a delicate place. Chief Thody offers stability and assurance to our members. And I think that's the most important part from, from the membership's perspective. So just keep that in mind when you vote, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dave Yano?
What is it?
Yano.
Good evening, council members, Hartford residents. My name is Dave Yano. I live at one fifty Warrenton Avenue. I am a vice president of, was a former vice president of ASB seventeen sixteen, the Hartford Public Library. I'm a member of Vietnam Veterans Against the War. I'm a chapter president of Chapter Forty-two of Veterans for Peace. And I'm a commissioner on the MDC. And what I came tonight to do is report a little bit about what's going on with MDC to all of you and my fellow residents here, that the city of Hartford has had an increase in its ad valorem from the MDC because the state of Connecticut and deep have not paid the thirteen million dollars that they, that they owe to the MDC for the water they've processed from the landfill. The landfill in Hartford has leached into the river. It's also the water that's there was processed through the sewers of MDC and the state has not, has neglected to pay MDC for that process. That caused the ad valorem tax for Hartford residents to go up to thirteen percent. It would have dropped down all the way to eight percent if they had paid, if they paid this money. That's one issue. The other issue that's going on with the MDC is that Niagara Bottling expects to get another discount for their water sale. And I'm one of the few commissioners who's advocated for that discount to no longer be in effect. They should pay the same amount for water that we, the residents, pay. A lot of us are saving, are cutting back on our water because the bill has gone up because of the integrated plan to repair our, our sewer systems in the city of Hartford, which was bonded, and I voted for it because it needs to be done. Long time ago, eighty-five percent of the infrastructure in all the cities in Hartford in the United States were paid by the federal government. That's what we need to get back to. That's going to take a lot of effort on the part of our elected officials to do that. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the violence that's going on endemic in our society. I'm doing this program on TV with a couple of other veterans, combat veterans, called Voices of Veterans. It's on Hartford Public Access Television. I think you might enlighten yourselves a little bit by listening to it and checking it out. It's on YouTube. I think it's important that you understand that veterans often bring the war home with them. It's sad to say. And what's happening today on the streets of Hartford is endemic, is epidemic, and the police department has a lot of veterans within its ranks and they know what I'm talking about. Rudyard Kipling, who we're all aware of, I'm going to quote him and end my little spiel here. When they ask you why your sons have died, tell them it was because their fathers lied.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Mike Zaleski. I'm the president and CEO of Riverfront Recapture. We are a nonprofit organization that's based here in Hartford, fifty Columbus Boulevard. We manage three public parks along the Connecticut River. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the nomination of Jason Thody, the interim chief. I've known him for more than a decade. I first worked with him when I was a member, the leader of the downtown business improvement district, and he was the zone commander. He was the downtown commander. At that time, he was Lieutenant Thody. He is a community-minded, fair individual who was very friendly to business and made sure that people understood the, the quality of life, not only in the downtown, but in the entire city, was important. Most recently, I've come to work with him again through our, our work at Riverfront Recapture. He is somebody who cares about quality of life, clean, safe parks and, and fun, festive, family, public events that are safe for the public. He is somebody who cares about the city. He's somebody that I think will help continue to guide this, this police department and this city forward. And we urge you to, to approve his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Giselle Feliciano?
Good evening, council members, residents. I am also here, like many others behind me, in support of Chief Thody. I believe I met Chief Thody in nineteen, or two thousand, let's say two thousand. I won't even date it that long, in my past as an executive assistant to council. Chief Thody, not only has he been thorough, he's been honest, he's been compassionate. And I want to make sure that you guys understand, because I've spoken to many of you on an individual basis, going out on a national search is a waste of time, energy, and money. When you have what, back in the day, I'll use former council president Calixto Torres, which hammered on making sure that our explorers became cadets, from our cadets became actual Hartford police officers. From police officers on the, on the actual street beat, they became lieutenants, captains, sergeants, however may they, their career choice may be. He's prime example of what is possible with what we have here now. I have seen too many chiefs on national search only last maybe two years at most. So with all honesty, I really recommend that you honestly look at someone who knows the neighborhood, can honestly sit with whoever here is part of quality of life, can explain what a grant is, when it's needed, the urgency of, to why it's needed for our city, knows the reasons why our police officers are lacking in certain services and what they need, because he himself has walked through it. So moving forward, this city, although he has been trashed behind the scenes, we are known for second chances. So he has made mistakes, which I'm not claiming he has. We are known for second chances. And as so, we should give him the chance to lead our city in the right direction and continue his ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Ganon Long?
My name is Ganon Long. I live at forty-nine Hungerford Street. I did send you all an email last week about Chief Thody's nomination, and I hope that you'll have a chance to read it. Thank you to one of you who responded to it. I just, before I talk about interim chief Thody, I just want to mention that I live about a block and a half from where the Harm Reduction Center on Grand Street is being opened up, and I'm in favor of it. Folks have been talking to our neighborhood group about it for several months. The NRZ sent a letter of support several months ago. There's a lot of data that folks have been gathering over time. They've presented it to the community in many different ways. They've done a lot of outreach. And I hope that anyone who opposes, you know, I, I think it's important to distinguish between harm reduction, which is saving people's lives for folks who are not ready for treatment yet, and going into treatment. So a hospital might be able to offer addiction services, but not everybody who's at risk of dying from hepatitis or AIDS or other diseases is going to be able to be at that level yet. And we need to meet people where we are. I hope that anybody who's opposing this, this center is going to approach it with compassion and data and, and honesty. And I hope that's, that anybody who thinks it shouldn't be at twenty-eight Grand Street is able to offer solutions of where better to meet the folks I encounter every day on my street, walking to the library, walking to work, walking to school. my street, walking to the library, walking to work, walking to school. You know, I think it's really important, and I salute the work that Mark Jenkins, Robin Deutsch, and other people are doing to save lives in our city. Regarding the police chief nomination, you know, I've had some interactions with interim Chief Thody. You know, he does some things well, as we've all acknowledged. I think the bigger issue here is not whether to support his nomination, it's the process by which this has been presented to us. The mayor ran for reelection last year, and many of you were running with him, on the premise that we would do a national search. When I first heard that, I scratched my head. I don't think we need a national search. And frankly, as somebody who was born and raised in Hartford, I find it offensive that we constantly seek outside folks to come do jobs. I don't know why we can't hire Hartford people to do jobs in this, in our city, and especially earning city taxpayer money as their income. That being said, that was what he ran on, and so to present, a month after he's elected, clearly he had no intention not just of doing a national search, but of doing no search at all. He didn't search farther than one office when looking for the new police chief. And the mayor has the right to nominate who he wants, but he should genuinely seek community input to make sure that he's finding the best person. And we can't know who the best person is until you post the job and interview more than one person. You all have aides sitting behind you. You all ran for office last year. You ran against more than one person for your position. You interviewed more than one person to sit in the seats behind you. And I think that's really important, that we have an open and transparent process. He might be the best person for the job, but we don't know that until we see who he's up against and who else might have ideas about it. So I would at least implore you to slow this process down, invite the community to be part of it, and offer an interview to a black police officer, to a woman, to a queer person. Open this up. And if you choose Thody in the end, the community will have more confidence in him, he'll be a better candidate. But don't rush this, especially when the mayor told us for months that this was, that he was going to do something completely different than what he did. I hope you all use your power and work together, and thank you for your service to the city of Hartford.
Thank you. I just want to mention that we do start our council meeting at seven, but because we still have so many of you here for the comment process, we will continue to hear your comments. So when coming up, please state your name, your address, your comment, and then after public comment is done, we will continue with our scheduled council meeting. With that said, Elaine Hatchett.
Good evening, everyone. I really only came to say congratulations to all the new council members, and I really wanted to really give a shout out to John Gale for getting reelected, the way that he got reelected, because I've lived in this city a long time, and during the course of the years that I've lived in this city, John Gale has always, I knew him before to be a lawyer, not a councilman, but I always hear John Gale's name when something happens in the city of Hartford and somebody needs to step in. Him and his wife, Tracy, I've always seen them do that. So when they do something in the community that they live in, then I try to support it. And congratulations, John, and keep up the good work. But I really only, honest to God, came to say congratulations. But since, since I'm here and I heard Debbie speak about the chief, and I really don't know the chief, but that's my girl, so I'll give him props. And I also give him props for Officer Barrett, because Officer Barrett helps us so much with the homeless people, that is totally unbelievable. And it brings tears to your eyes. So as long as the chief, if he becomes the chief, does not bother Officer Barrett, he'll always have my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jane Foster.
Madam President, council members, my name is Mary Jane Foster. I am the president and CEO of Interval House. For those of you who might not know, Interval House is the state's largest domestic violence agency. We serve Hartford and the surrounding twenty-three towns and cities. I'm here to speak tonight in support of the nomination of Jason Thody as Hartford's police chief. Not long after he was named interim chief, we asked for a meeting. We had one almost immediately scheduled. We were ushered into his office, and it was the most welcoming and open reception I've had in a police department, I think, ever. And we sat down and said, we'd like to know how we can work more closely with you with better results for victims of domestic violence. If you don't know, Hartford's criminal court has the largest caseload of domestic cases in the state, so this is imperative for us. And he said, well, what can we do together? And we very timidly said, well, we could embed a domestic advocate in your police department. He said, let's do it. Let's do it. That'll work. Tell me about how, the things that could happen. Well, one of the things that happens is we have lethality assessment tools that every police officer and law enforcement officer in the state of Connecticut uses to assess the level of risk for victims of domestic violence when they're on a call. Well, by embedding an advocate, not only are we in a constant training mode of officers, but we're in a constant communication mode with officers. We can predict domestic violence homicides. They happen following very, very predictable patterns of behavior. So by working hand in glove with the Hartford Police Department, we will be able to prevent these homicides. We will be able to prevent serious harm to victims, because after these officers and victims connect, our hotline is called, and we are immediately in touch with those victims. The other thing I want to say about Chief Thody that really, I think is important and really impressed me as I spoke with him, he said, you know, years ago, the police officer on the beat wasn't confronted with all of the issues that we are today. It was a different world and a different time. And I understand we cannot do it all, so we have to have partners. And so he was happy to work with us. He is working on other relationships, and those relationships are not only going to enrich the performance of Hartford's police department, but they are going to change the culture, the culture that some of us have had concerns about in police departments. Working together, the culture will change, and I believe Jason Thody is the man to do that. I hope he'll have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Inez, is it Reyes from two oh one Felt Bush Avenue?
Hello. My name is Inez Begiis from Behind the Rocks. I am president of the Greater Hartford African-American Alliance. Mayor Bronin has nominated Jason Thody for the position of Hartford's Police Chief of Police to ensure continuity and accountability of departments. This nominee came up through the ranks of the department and is familiar with the people and the city's neighborhoods. The alliance consequently supports the nominee while at the same time having the following concerns. First, interim Chief Thody's personnel record, as indicated at least at our meetings, contains at least one incident that would have prevented him from assuming the office of Chief of Police in many other municipalities. Documented inappropriate behavior has been seemingly overlooked, supposedly for the good of the city. Second, when and if he is appointed and begins traveling around the city, the state, and the country, Mr. Thody will face, will become the face of another department that is inconsistent with the faces of the majority of the residents who are culturally, ethnically, and racially different. The capital city is long overdue in having consecutive unbroken appointments of department heads that resemble the residents who have, the residents who have not experienced white privilege, and who have had, in too many instances, more than their share of awkward, unfortunate experiences with the police in the city. Steps need to be taken now to address this issue in a two-pronged attack centering on promotion and recruitment. Recent data indicates, suggests that there are significantly fewer African-Americans in decision-making positions at the higher levels of the police department. There are so few sixteen-nineteen arrivals to America when compared to male and female Caucasians and Hispanics, that their overall influence and impact can only be deemed insignificant. In addition, the alliance is keeping a watchful eye on how African-Americans as a group and individually progress through the steps of becoming a police officer. So to summarize, the alliance has no sharp disagreements with the nomination of Jason Thody to become the next Hartford Police Chief. However, the alliance's goal will be to have, in all levels of the police department, a preponderance of officers who both resemble the people who live and vote in this urban center and who value and respect our city, not just work here. Thank you.
Eduardo from one-seventy Cisson Avenue. Eduardo? Is that what it is? Oh, Eddie. Yes, yes, you're up, Eddie.
Edward Hagenback, one-seventy Cisson Avenue. That's not how you say it, thank you. I am Brian Foley. I like him a lot. He talked to me at the library. He was very comfortable. He didn't cut me off, short, whatever. The second thing is, I'm making it quick, the second thing is, I agree with Minion Dallas. We are having problems with Park Street. I got off the Park, I mean, yeah, I get off the Parkville Pass Track, and it's a mini-market. We had an incident down there, and there wasn't a cop down the street. He sits in his cruiser, he doesn't do anything, and it goes onward. I just think that we need him to go down there, I hope he's permanent, because I like him. I would work with him very badly with this neighborhood, because I bought it on Cisson Avenue. The second thing is, I'm very touched what Superintendent of Public Schools said, that we do get the money, and we're helping the Latinos out with the public schools. I wish she could say that some more. But anyway, she said it right on the school board meeting, that they're getting their act together, they knew what happened the last time, and they don't want to make a mistake. So when they come over here to this country, they get support. She didn't say housing, but she said the school system is looking into the budget because they have to raise a little more money so they could, so they can go to schools here. I agree with that. I just don't agree with what's going on with down there. Why can't they say we need aid and all that? And the last thing is, I was following this XL Center. I don't want this pot of money thrown at us. I want to work with our governor, our governor, to make sure that the dollars that we use for the civics XL, XL Center gets done right. I can't stand piesmaling XL Center. I hope this council will work with me and our mayor and our governor. We just don't, I don't want this, the money shoved down here. What I want is people to understand, if we're going to do this project, let's make sure that the XL Center is done. It's not this door pot of money at us, because they don't do it right. They don't piesmale it together. So I want this council to know, if they have their voice said with this XL Center, please tell Luke Bronin, we want to do it correctly. We don't want to just piesmale something together, put seats in, that's it, or do another project, that's it. I'm very touched with that. I just want this council to know that also, fifty-five million is a lot of money, but if we do it right, and the council sticks together and listens to Luke Bronin and anything, then we could have a quality XL Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Hammond.
Hi, Leslie Hammond, One Linden Place. And it's awesome to have so many people here. I really love it when there's so many people that come speak out for public comment. And, you know, my heart goes out to the attorneys AS and the others in the neighborhood talking about the Harm Reduction Center, but I thought that, you know, everything had been squared away, that you guys were behind it, and the mayor was behind it, so obviously there was a disconnect. I know that Mark did reach out to Representative Gonzalez, and they did not make a connection. So we, you know, people are suffering, and there's a lot of fear about the unknown. And they admitted that there's addiction, that there's addicts right at their doorstep. They admitted that, but they didn't see this as a solution, I guess. I know we have the methadone clinic and the addiction services right down the block from where I live in South Downtown, and I don't believe there's been any problems. So I think we just need a lot more discussion and research, and hopefully somebody can bring them to the table, because I know Mark has done a lot of work. He, you know, initially wanted to be on Park Street, and then you all wanted him on Grand Street, and there was just a disconnect. So it's unfortunate, because our city is really suffering. People are dying. People are dying in the streets over this addiction. Some come from the suburbs, we know that, but still, they're on our streets, so we got to figure that out. As far as Jason Thody, you know, I said my piece the other night, and you guys really did some homework and got a lot of people here, which is great. My thing is with the process, we've just gone through a horrible two weeks on a national level where our democracy is being threatened. I mean, we have a dictator bully as a president, and we have Republicans going along who are either being threatened or something, I don't know, but they're just going along. And I just ask you all to own your power as council people and insist on a process if you feel like something is being rammed down your throats. Don't just go along. He could be the right candidate, as Ganon said. It would be great if we went through the process and we found out he was the right person. That would be really good for the city. But I do not like the way we have this strong mayor that just makes this decision, and one candidate tells us he talked to a couple other people, not sure about that. So I really want to know more about that, and I think it's really, it's really important for our city. One last thought, I just came across this, that Hartford Housing Authority is selling their scattered site properties, so I'm really concerned about that. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Angus Vivian.
I just want to say, it is always wonderful to see a large crowd of people, and you're probably going to be seeing more of this, because anyone who hasn't seen it, and she's knitting, but on page five of the current Hartford news, Donna Swar put together for everyone a wonderful whole page on how to communicate with the city council. She made a cartoon, she wrote a story, she has all the councilors and aides' phone numbers and emails, and she also has when during the month all the committees' meetings are held. People always want to know, all the time. Take one of these home, there's more downstairs, I'll grab, cut it out, and you will always know how to get in touch and when to be here. That wasn't part of my talk. That was just a little advertorial. Chief Thody, I took a little tour yesterday. This is for everybody, but you're here. Something needs to be done about the horrendous situation at Ward and Affleck Street, at the Zion Hill Cemetery, and the four Jewish cemeteries that are also on the property. If anybody doesn't know it already, it's horrible. There's desecration, there's vandalism beyond graffiti. This is not talking about graffiti, we're talking about wilding, where groups go in there and destroy dozens of gravestones at a time. You can take a walk through there and see them. They don't just knock them off their bases, they break them into pieces. They are disturbing people's ancestors. That cemetery is also full of- That cemetery is also full of needles and syringes and cotton swabs. There is junk left there, there's clothing, there's shoes, there's trash. They have tried to break into mausoleums. The glass won't break, but it crazes and there's even one with a bullet hole in it. That is a mess. There's a police substation, Chief Thody, you know this, right on that corner, on the corner of Affleck and Ward Street, right across from where I'm talking about. This activity goes on. It is unconscionable. Something needs to be done about this. How would you feel if it was one of your relatives and their grave was destroyed that way? It's wrong, wrong, wrong. Please, people, pay attention. That needs attention. It's a horrible, horrible spot and they're in there in large numbers and nobody does anything about it ever. Now I'm going to bring up one more thing, and this is the most important. You all need to know this because we're paying for this. The taxpayers are paying for this. The overnight warming center at the Milner School on Vine and Magnolia is a disgrace. And there are many people who can attest to that, they have been there. The people, the city hired the Salvation Army to oversee that warming center. The Salvation Army in turn took the money the city gave them and hired people who are not Salvation Army employees to be the staff members there. I can tell you from personal experience, and there's someone else in this room can, and if Jim Barrett wants to tell you, he'll tell you the same thing. They treat these people shamefully. They treat them like animals. There is no compassion. It is a horrible situation. They are standing out there, they line up at 2:00 in the afternoon in order to get a cot, and they stand out there in the cold, in the snow, in the rain, in front of the building, in the back of the building, that's where the entrance is. It opens at 7:00 PM. The staff members show up at 5:00 PM. And the people have said to them, please, can we just come into the entryway in the lobby so we can get out of the cold? There's a man in a wheelchair out there wrapped in blankets, there are other people huddled in blankets, and they said, no. And a man said to him, why won't you let us do that? And he said, if you don't like it, you can get the F out of here. And he said, why would you talk to me that way? And he said, if you don't like it, you can get the F out of here. How about that? How about that, folks? One man made a video, a little video, he put it on YouTube a few weeks ago, and it wasn't bad. He was just talking to the different people out there, talking about how hard it was to be out there freezing for hours and hours before you can get in. Well, that night, when the people showed up, the staff said to them, hey, you guys, you know you were on YouTube? And they said, yeah. They said, you know, you really shouldn't be doing that because you could lose your services. And if you continue to do that, we can make it so that you can't get in anywhere. That's called freedom of speech. They have every single right to do that. They tried to chase me out of there and Donna because they said, you're on private property. I said, this is not private property, this is a school owned by the city of Hartford. And it's not 7:00, it's still daytime. Oh, well, you can't talk to those people. They're standing outside, why can't I talk to them? Oh, you can't. You can't talk to them. This is a huge problem. By the way, the man who made the video, he waited in line for four hours and when it came his turn to get in, they refused him a cot. And he said, why? He said, I've been waiting. He said, because you made that video, you're not getting in here tonight. So our tax dollars are paying for that. And I think everybody's like, oh, we've got the overnight warming center, we don't have to worry about those homeless people anymore, they're all taken care of. No, they're not taken care of. And I suggest you folks, around 4:00 in the afternoon, before the jailers get there, because that's how they treat them, that you go out there and see them for yourself and see how our tax dollars are being spent. People are being emotionally and verbally abused. They are not being treated like human beings. Keep it in mind, please.
Will Moffett?
Will Moffett, Parkville. I actually thought it was going to be this moment where I burned all my bridges and caused the scene, but I guess I got that out the way early, so no pressure. Last city council, I talked about Kevin Brookman's blog and how a lot of those anonymous comments in the blogs, assumedly from police officers, painted a really toxic picture. I've created copies of documents, I can email you, but I'm going to leave it here, of many of these comments, and particularly regarding Jason Thody. I want to apologize to Jason Thody's fiancee, I know she's in the room, some of the things I've been talking about publicly are very uncomfortable and I feel like a jerk for bringing them up, but I feel morally obligated to because this is a very important position. Aside from all of the other negative things that have come out in Jason Thody's past, when I found out that when he was 20 and an assistant coach in a softball team, he coached a girl who was 12, and that girl later became his wife. Again, they probably met later on when she was older and of a consensual age, but to me, that is grooming. If you see some of these comments, many of the officers even accuse him of having a thing for younger women. It's a systematic thing that seemed to keep happening, and to me, it is very troubling. Jason Thody seems like a great guy. Every time I go and I see him speak, he says amazing things, he seems like a really progressive person, he seems like he knows a lot of policies and that he might be a good chief. But when I know these things about his moral character, and I'm sorry, listen, I'm an anarchist, I'm an abolitionist, no chief will satisfy me. I will constantly see the police as a form of white supremacy, I will constantly see the police as a patriarchy, and a lot of the community does. There has been no vetting process because I think these things are known. These things have been known, they're talked about in hushed whispers. Luke Bronin's attacked full enough person. Right now, where is he? He is in New Hampshire campaigning for Pete Buttigieg, another person who has been accused of really problematic issues with police departments. And they're both out of dodge and they're dodging these things because they know that everyone's got dirt. And listen, I'm very troubled when I hear these things about Jason Thody. It disturbs me, especially in a city that has dealt with Janelle, the predator in the public school system, Angel RC, the rep who's text grooming a child came out, Angel Morales, another member of the political establishment, also seen as being a predator. These things are true, and I'm not going to let this city hide from hard facts, and I'm sorry that I yelled and I screamed hard truths, but I will always do that because that doesn't seem like anyone else that he was able to. But thank you. Leaving my copies right here if y'all want them.
Donna Swar?
Hi, Donna Swar, Eight Schulter Place. Good evening. I'm here to support items 18 and 19. 18 is about John Gale being added to the park, Public Works Park Rec and Environment Committee. When I heard that Councilman Bermudez could no longer be able to serve on PWPRNE Committee, I was concerned that the issues which the Park and Rec Advisory Commission had been addressing would be stalled. I'm pleased that Councilman Gale had been added back onto the committee, although I recognize that it represents an additional burden for him. I believe that over the past four years, he has never missed a meeting. He has provided support to the commissioners on the Park and Rec Advisory Commission by providing relevant information and, excuse me, explanations about municipal and legislative practices and processes. Number 19 is about including and reviewing comments of affected NRZs and developments. When I read the state Connecticut's National, sorry, Neighborhood Revitalization Zone Legislation Program, it appeared to me that item number 19 would set the expectation for an NRZ review more clearly in the city's ordinance. When I moved to Hartford in 2007, it had been the practice for proposals for new developments to be reviewed by local and in some cases, adjacent NRZs, as well as seek NRZ support for proposed projects. So I was really surprised to see this on the agenda, but I realize now that some people need it to be more explicitly stated, and I also think that, yes, there's room for improvement. Many times, I've gone to some of these meetings and some of the residents didn't understand their role and what the topic should be centered on. Anne brought up about the warming shelter. I saw the man's video and it prompted me to go and see for myself. It's an uncomfortable thing to go to a warming center that houses people that are so desperate that they don't sign up for housing, that they basically are preferring to live rough. So you know, things are pretty bad for these people. And I went over and it was earlier in the day than 7:00, and I just wanted to meet them. I wasn't afraid of them, they were very nice people. There was not a single person whose behavior made me uncomfortable, they were friendly, accepting, and I was absolutely shocked with the demeanor and the behavior and the way these people were treated. Animals, I'm not so sure, it was just horrible. They were telling me I wasn't allowed to be there, I was told that I wasn't allowed to talk to people, I was, the police were called. The police said that they too have had some issues with these people, that they are not allowed in the building. And they threatened to call the police, they did call the police, they came once, they threatened to call them again. And quite frankly, I just said, I know I'm not going to get arrested because I didn't do anything except stand here and talk to these people. I think something is really wrong, really, really, really wrong about the way this place is being run. And I really urge you to go there for yourself as just a resident and see what is going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky Malanowski?
Good evening, members of council. I am here to speak on Jason's character as a human being. And I went to college. I learned in college Wikipedia is not a credible source, just like anonymous blog posts. Jason and I have been very open and candid with each other through our relationship. We've both been in previous relationships. The information that you have received that he was a 20-year-old coach dating a 12-year-old player? Insanity. First of all, nobody would do that. That's insane. Second of all, him and his ex-wife are six years apart. That's a fact, a fact, a credible fact. You want to talk about his character? I am the expert. I am his fiancee. We have been together for close to a decade. He loves dogs. We love being outside with our dogs. We enjoy hanging out with each other, we watch movies together. He is an honest person. He is the love of my life. He's amazing. I just wanted to clear the facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cecil, I can't read the last name, Ten Chabon Place?
Hi, thank you. Cecil Spahoe, Ten Chabon Place. Thank you, Madam President, esteemed council, citizens and anarchist. I just wanted to approach you, I was here last year talking about an issue that we were having in the South End regarding a food truck. Unfortunately, to sum up quickly, this food truck runs till about 4:00. It brings a lot of people, a lot of noise, and a lot of loud music. Unfortunately, the municipal codes support this food truck from running 24 hours a day if it wants to. I've spoken with the mayor's office, the mayor's office pointed me to Councilman Sanchez, who pointed me to the police department, which pointed me back to the mayor's office. And I just want to be brief, I'll come back in two weeks to continue to talk about this and I'll email all of you the situation, but I'm not happy with the fact that we've got another spring and summer and fall coming for the fifth year now because of this issue, where we won't get sleep during the weekends in the evening. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. The next person who signed up, I can't read their name, is it Lorna from 30 Evergreen Avenue? Oh, Lorenzo. Lorenzo what? Lilly, okay. Hello, Mr. Lorenzo Lilly.
Hello, everybody. My name Lorenzo, I write for your bed. I live 30 Evergreen Avenue, apartment 107, and I've been in the area now for about 30 years. And what now is, what I'm talking about, the last time I talked to the mayor, the mayor office, he got some people, a lady worked on the office, she was very rude to me, she hung up the phone on me and, you know, threatened to do something, but I ain't worried about that. But my problem is, you have a lot of these, and I'm not prejudiced, you have a lot of these, these rabbis out of New York buying their property, they're a number of slum lords. They bought a lot of property, they did the same thing to Rutherford. They buy buildings, where I live at, they got an address in Brooklyn, you send your money to Brooklyn. And if you don't have that money, if they don't get that money on the first of the month, they charge you lay charge. And I was talking to my other partner, over there on Forest Street where I live at, they say that the city can't deal with them, but there's something phony about those peoples. You go to the office sometime, they're not there or something wrong, and I told them about the building. You go down and look at the steps. I almost broke my neck going down the steps there, and there's water coming into the inside of the building, and I don't know who to talk to. I was talking to a guy, he give me a paper. He said, I've been late for three months of my rent. I got the whole thing for my rent. And I thought the laws of the state of Connecticut was that you got to do the first and the 10th of the month you pay, but he said on the first of the month. Now, he gonna help me if, which I'm gonna get out of Hartford. I got to leave, I got to leave. I'm 79 years old. Where I live, there's a lot of drugs and everything, you can't walk the street no more. I'm scared to walk the street now. But I would like to somebody to, you're gonna have a new police chief, they had a thing in Asylum Hill, those people that hanging around those places, selling drugs and paying Allen, they used to lock them up and give them tickets, they don't do that no more. So I think that was effective. But I'm saying to you, somebody should do something about it. Hartford gonna be just like the apartment over on, over on Barbara Street, because these people don't care nothing about the place. Thank you.
Jennifer Kasoy. Jennifer? Oh, Cassidy, I'm sorry.
Good evening. It's certainly been a long time since I've been here and welcome to all the new council people. I'm Jennifer Cassidy, I live at 36 Ashley Street, and I would like to speak about number 19, the resolution from Councilwoman Surgeon about NRZ inclusion in development service development pre-application process. I was in, I've been involved in the asylum hill neighborhood for way before the NRZ process and through the NRZ process. And I know that when it first, first of all, you have to approve our plans as well as the city does. And when the NRZ process first began, we all had a city planner, and our city planner, if there was even a whiff of anything coming in the neighborhood, would contact the NRZ. And that process seems to have been lost, not just on pre-application big projects, but on little projects. We, last year, almost got a liquor store going through P and Z and we didn't even get notified about it. And so I certainly support this effort, I'm sure something prompted this, but I would encourage you to look at the whole NRZ process and how the city relates to and refers items to the neighborhoods because it seems to be, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. And I think if you're going to look at this process, I would encourage you to look at even the little projects like group homes and some of this other stuff that just arrives in neighborhoods and the neighborhood is not involved. So I look forward to learning more about your resolution and working with you on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Henrietta Beckman? Henrietta Beckman?
Hello. My name is Alan Looper. I'm at One Gold Street. I didn't sign up to speak. I signed up as an attendee, but I did not sign up specifically to speak, so I will yield the mic to someone else who would like to have more time.
Okay, thank you. Juan Antojito's Restaurant? Okay. Mari Sol Manzaran?
I'm Adam Chair and Council, City Residents. Thank you so much for allowing us to come in here today and talk to you. We would like to bring about what you have heard before about the Harm Reduction Center on 28 Grant Street. I have been, I'm working with Richard Sias. His business is on 20 Grant Street, which is one house over where the center is being proposed to open. In talking to the merchants and the property owners and the residents and families that you have heard today, there is, there is a lot of worry in the air. There's a lot of people investing money in this community, effort, sweat, people that are business owners that are there from seven o'clock in the morning to who knows what time at night. And they're really, they're really sad. And they're hoping that you're gonna listen to what we had to say today. And also, we would like to address, there were some, also businesses that came in, but they had to leave, but they wanna, they wanna have another meeting. In addition to that, we do understand and we sympathize with the need that is out there. I worked partry for about 20 years. I know what that is. I was there removing snow with, with folks to open up doors in businesses when I was working at SAMA. The work that Julio Mendoza has done, the work that Mini Goncalo have done, the millions that were brought by Mini in a group for the new library where we're gonna have kids walking around the neighborhood with people that, we know faces in the neighborhood, we know people that are our usual people that we know that are around the neighborhood, which are, you know, part of the shelter. We understand, we know this clientele. There's a lot of people that are coming into the city that we might not know. We might know that there is a need for drugs, that they have a need for drugs, that they're not doing well, that they need counseling, that they need, you know, health assistance. We understand all that and we sympathize. But there's a place and, 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 a place for everything. And I guess what the community is saying, this is not the correct place to have this center. And we hopefully think that you will listen to us, maybe give us an opportunity to meet again so that you can hear what the community have to say. Yeah, there has been research about it. There's, we know that there's a need. We seen the number, we seen the stats, and we understand. But we also understand that that might not be the place for them and we have to look into it. We have to research a little bit more. Let's not make a drastic decision and, you know, get together and try to find a solution because we do need, we understand that they need that and they need the support and we're not disregarding that. But we have to sit down and go further with this. And really thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Vicente? Ms. Vicente? She had to go? This concludes our public comment section for tonight. We will reconvene in five minutes for our regularly scheduled council meeting. Thank you all for joining us here tonight.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being patient this evening. It's been quite a long evening. I'd like to call this meeting of Monday, February 10th, 2020, to order. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Bermudez?
Present.
Councilwoman Gale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Present.
Councilwoman Lebron?
Present.
Councilwoman Rosado?
Present.
Councilwoman Rosetti?
Here.
And Councilwoman Surgeon?
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation and God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to start with a prayer from Pastor A. Johnson.
Let us all stand. Tonight, before we pray, let us take a moment to reflect on the unfortunate events that happened today at Weaver High School. We have young people crying out for help in our city. And as we all know, we are four weeks away from spring and we know what to expect in our city. So tonight I pray that we end the cycle of poverty in our city. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, before we ask you for anything tonight, Lord, we just want to thank you for everything. We want to thank you, Lord God, for each member here who has come tonight to conduct city business. Lord, we know that to whom much is given, much is required. Help them to get through this. Help us to provide legislation that ends poverty. Help our Public Safety Committee do the work that needs to be done so we can end violence in our city. And Lord, we ask that you bless each and every person, Lord God, that is represented here tonight. Bless our mayor, bless our city council, and bless our city. In Christ's name we pray. Can everyone say amen?
Thank you, Pastor A. Johnson. And now we have a point of personal privilege from Councilwoman Bermudez.
Thank you, through you, Council President. I just wanted to give a message for those of you who've been asking and shout out to Eddie, thank you for this request. Community folks have been asking, what are we doing to help the families who are still on the island who've been impacted by these earthquakes that are occurring in Puerto Rico? And so one direct way that folks can help is through the cthelpspr.org website, cthelpspr.org website. It is a website that has been placed with the help of our local chapters of CICD and of the Puerto Rican Parade here, the chapter in Hartford and other chapters throughout the state of Connecticut. And so it's a consolidated effort to help those individuals and families being impacted by the earthquakes that are occurring in Puerto Rico in specific zones. Another way that the community, just to provide more context and information, those families who are arriving to Hartford because of the earthquake can receive assistance through the San Juan Center at this particular moment. There are some, there's a small pool of funds, I'm gonna say small because it is a small pool of funds that has been awarded through the state of Connecticut. And lastly, the Hartford Public Schools Welcome Center is gonna be rolling out a program for the students and families that they're receiving. As of right now, we have upwards of 54 students who are enrolled, are enrolling in the Hartford Public School System as a direct result of the earthquakes occurring in Puerto Rico. And I'm only doing this out of the request of people in the community like Eddie who said, can you please provide us with an update at the next council meeting? So thank you, Eddie.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bermudez. Mr. Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I would like to make a motion that we place the following items on our consent calendar. Item number two, with accompanying resolution authorizing the city to apply for and accept $60,000 in grants from the NC AAA for the funding period October 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2020 to be used for the Dial-A-Wire program administered by the Hartford Department of Health and Human Services. Item number five, with accompanying resolution authorizing the city to apply for and accept $134,105 in grants from the NC AAA for the funding period October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020 to be used for the elderly nutrition program administered by the Hartford Department of Health and Human Services. Item number six, with accompanying resolution authorizing the city to accept, apply for and accept $50,000 in grants from the NC AAA for the funding period October 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2020 to be used for the Heart and Home Help Program administered by the Hartford Department of Health and Human Services. Item number eight, with accompanying resolution authorizing the city to apply for and accept a grant for $11,831 in grants from the NC AAA for the funding period October 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2020 to be used for the Keep On Living Program administered by the Hartford Department of Health and Human Services. Item number 10, with accompanying resolution authorizing the city to accept for, apply for and accept a grant of $100,000 for the Department of Health and Human Services Hartford Healthy Family Initiative from the Connecticut Department of Public Health. Item number 11, with accompanying resolution authorizing the transfer of $34,722 from the sundry non-operating department to the registrar of voters' office for the primary on March 3rd, 2020. Item number 15, with accompanying resolution confirming the appointment of Gregory Chambers to the LGP, LGBTQ plus commission. Item number 16, with accompanying resolution authorizing the city to apply for and accept a grant of $25,000 from the Connecticut Office of Health Strategy for Phase Two of the Health Enhancement Community. Item number 18, with accompanying resolution that membership of the Public Works, Parks, Recreation, and Environment Committee shall be amended to add Councilman John Q. Gale to the said committee. And item number 20, with the resolution that the Court of Common Counsel approves Operation Prom to be held on Sunday, April 5th, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at City Hall, 550 Main Street, with no liability to the city of Hartford and the event must be free and open to the public.
Make a second motion.
Are there any discussions? A motion has been made and properly second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On the consent items, Councilwoman Bermudez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lebron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado?
Yes.
And I'm recusing myself from item 11.
Noted. Councilwoman Rosetti?
Yes.
Councilwoman Surgeon?
Yes.
Pass.
Mr. Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I would like to make a motion to place the following items on the referred calendar. Item number one, with accompanying resolution that the Court of Common Counsel hereby authorizes the city to enter into a lease agreement with the New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the use of city property for wireless installations to go to the Planning, Economic, and Development and Housing Committee. Also, item number 19, to be referred to the Planning, Economic Development, and Housing Committee, which is the resolution that the city of Hartford Department of Development Services must develop and implement a process that will include the review and comments of the affected NRZs as a part of the pre-application process in areas of planned development or new business in the city of Hartford.
Motion to second.
Are there any discussions? There being none, a motion has been made and properly second. Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
On the referred items, Councilwoman Bermudez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lebron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosetti?
Yes.
Councilwoman Surgeon?
Yes.
Items are referred.
Mr. Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the following items be referred to the Operations Management, Budget, and Government Accountability Committee. Item number three, resolution authorizing the city to execute and deliver a five-year contract with Oxygen Finance Americas Incorporated for the period of March 1st, 2020 through February 28th, 2025. Item number 17, an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Article 1, for tax relief for the elderly of the municipal code with a hearing date of February 18th, 2020. Item number four, to be referred to the Parks, Public Works, and Environment Committee, which is a resolution confirming the appointment of Carice Reynolds and Richard Shaw to the Board of Directors for the Energy Improvement District. Item number, recommendation for items number seven and nine to be referred to the Health and Human Services Committee. Item number seven, with accompanying resolution authorizing the city to apply for and accept a grant of $48,707 from the State of Connecticut Department of Health and enter to a contract with the Department of Public Health for the purposes of supporting the Injury Prevention Program. And item number nine, with the resolution authorizing the city to apply for and accept a grant of $131,051.81 from the Connecticut Department of Public Health Office of Local Health Administration for our per capita award.
Motion to second, second motion.
Are there any discussions? A motion has been placed and properly second. Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
On the referred items again, Councilwoman Bermudez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lebron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosetti?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Surgeon?
Yes.
Referring items, I've passed.
Mr. Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that we refer the following items, receive the following report, sorry. Item number 14, with the company, accompanying ordinance making it unlawful for any person to sell or offer for sale any flavored tobacco products.
I second the motion.
Are there any discussions? Motion has been made and properly second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On the received item, Councilwoman Bermudez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lebron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosetti?
Yes.
Councilwoman Surgeon?
Yes.
Items are received.
Mr. Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that we postpone the following agenda item, item number 13, with accompanying resolution confirming the appointment of Thea Montanes as Chief Operating Officer.
Second motion.
Are there any discussions? A motion has been made and properly second. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
On the postponed item, Councilwoman Bermudez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lebron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosetti?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Surgeon?
Yes.
Items are postponed.
Mr. Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I would like to make a motion that we enter into executive session for item number 12, accompanying resolution authorizing the council to enter into executive session in order to discuss the resolution of claims under the Workers' Compensation Act by former police officer Detective Joe Kiddick.
Second motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
On the executive session, Councilwoman Bermudez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lebron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosetti?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Surgeon?
We are now in executive session. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I would like to make a motion that we come out of executive session.
Second motion.
Yes, second.
Did you second it?
On the executive session item, Councilwoman Bermudez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lebron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosetti?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Surgeon?
Yes.
Pass.
Mr. Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to, I'd like to make a motion that we act on item number 12, accompanying resolution to, company resolution. resolution to, company resolution on the workers' comp claim.
Second motion.
A motion has been made and properly second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voting on the item itself, Councilwoman Bermudez?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Gale?
Yes.
Councilman LeBron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosetti?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Surgeon?
Yes.
Item 12 passes.
With no other business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned.